Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the audience comment on the agenda items first?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Mr. Persing, Gordon Lamb. Apparently you've got three options for the budget tonight. A two-mill increase, losing two cops, a 3.5-mill increase, losing one cop, and a 5.5-mill increase, and losing no cops. Now, why can't we have a fourth option? Where we have a two-mill increase and a reduction in the parks budget by $223,000 to cover the cost of keeping both cops? You've got 40 percent parks renovation budget, most people have got 3 percent one. It looks like you can't afford any more.
Other comment? Yes, sir.
I have one. About the police budget, Matt. Why didn't you guys read over that before you signed it? The number is saying that you guys didn't read over everything, you just signed the name.
What are you talking about?
You're talking about with the police budget.
The contract.
With what they, what they, what you guys passed, you didn't read over everything. On their contract. Did you read over everything that you signed?
The police contract.
Well, with what you guys were going through the last year.
We did that two years ago.
Did you read over everything? That you guys signed?
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the budget tonight.
Well, I think it does.
Well, with the two per, two and a half percent pay increase.
Yeah. What does a retired person get?
1.7.
1.7. And you guys want to go-
1.7 what?
And you guys want to keep raising us and raising us and raising us. Why don't you get work in town? Instead of putting it on the property owner. All the time it's on the property owner. The property owner.
Then you're speaking against taxes.
What?
You're speaking against taxes?
If anything was happening to your family, you would really scream, "Black sheep." But you guys can do whatever you want to because you're all one system. You're all one party. You're all yes-men. Everybody says yes, what you say is pretty self-
I wish you had some particulars you'd talk about.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
You understand what I'm getting at?
No, I don't.
I might not explain myself very good. You know what we're calling it.
Okay, I'll take that, you're against raising taxes.
What?
I will take your statement as you're against raising taxes. You sound like that's what you're saying.
Yes, I am.
Alright, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm against raising taxes too, especially when it goes five mils. I would appreciate if we could keep the officers, but if we can't afford to keep them, we just can't afford to keep them. But, we got an increase in our social security, 1.7. How far is that increase gonna go when raising taxes and everything else is raising? Every year we get less to less to live on. You can't always put it on the tax, the homeowner, to foot all the bills.
Yes, sir.
While we're on the matter of budget, Mr. Lamb mentioned a budget for recreation. The recreation budget, or cut back to what the other municipalities spend. And there's a DCNR report that shows 3 percent per city this size is what they spend, and Sunbury is at about 14 percent for the recreation budget. To reduce that to what most of the other cities spend, you have the money then to pay for another police officer, one, the police officer you want to lay off. Additionally, the snack bar, both the pool and the skating rink have lost money for four years. There's another cost saving that easily be turned into a profit for the city by privatizing that. You would stop the loss and you would collect money from the concessionaire. Furthermore, I've heard it bantered about that the pension is a problem, looking at the accrual of unfunded liability. So, further privatization of the skating rink itself would pull the city out of that by selling that facility to a group that would run it as a business, as a profit, for their own profit. City through the privatization or sale of that rink would then have the money to retain the police officers, help provide the public with the protection they need, and pull you out of the budget crunch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I've owned the police department for over 20 years, and-
I'm sorry, can we have your name?
Ken Mallor. I own south side stores in South Front Street.
Okay.
And, we've been in this for about 20 years, and, we have to find a way to keep the police officers because, over the years, it's gotten worse around here, not better. So, I, I want to do whatever we can to keep the police officers because, we had an instance where we had shop register, and it took almost an hour for an officer to get there. You know, these guys are busy. And I don't want to have to hold someone that long, you know, we need to have the police officers here. And, in all the years that we've been in business, this past summer, we had our doors smashed in, had over $6,000 worth of stuff stolen. So, you know, the reality of being business here is that we need police protection.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Oh, boy, man, I live on 7th Street. I agree, I think we need 15 police. Not 13. I lived in 7th Street. This gentleman ran my home. Before 5:00 o'clock in the morning, when the arsonist was on 7th Street, he was just, he didn't care. He didn't care. He was in town, he could do what he wanted to do. He, he just, I had trouble to my left, I had trouble to the right. 30 years ago when I bought the home, it was a nice neighborhood. And now, it's terrible. I haven't installed security cameras, just for peace and law. Yeah, it's just gotta get fixed, somehow.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, Redevelopment Authority, 239 Spruce Street. Martial litigation settlement resolution. I believe all council has that. This is a property that was at 239 Spruce Street. It was a half a double, and the Redevelopment Authority got involved in it and tried to help a neighbor, then the neighbor didn't want to help us. So, we went back and forth on it, and what we've done is put it up for sale, got an outside person to buy it, that person is actively fixing it up. So, while the legal situation was running around, we were taking care of the property because we wanted to fix the neighborhood up, that's what happened. And right now, there's a, a young gentleman that bought that property, is fixing it up. They turned the plan into the code office, so that's, everything's following in place. So, what we want to do tonight is settle the legal part of it. Whereas the City of Sunbury and the City of Sunday Redevelopment Authority have been working to remove the blight on the property located at 239 Spruce Street. Whereas the City of Sunbury and the Redevelopment Authority sold the property at public auction, and the new property owner is actively working with the code office to bring the property up to code pursuant to an approved redevelopment plan. Whereas the marshals recognize the blighted condition is successfully being removed at the property pursuant to approved redevelopment plan. They have agreed to settle any and all litigation in Northumberland County Court, please. Special counsel shall have the approval of city council to negotiate a settlement agreement regarding the property located at 239 Spruce Street for the sum of $4,300 to settle, discontinue, and end with prejudice all litigation in Northumberland County. Mayor Persing shall have the authority to sign all settlement documents on behalf of the City of Sunbury and the City of Sunday Redevelopment Authority. And this $4,300 will be paid by the Redevelopment Authority, not the city. Do you have any motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Second reading, code ordinance, Rick.
I think that's, yeah.
Would you like me to watch it?
Yeah, I don't remember.
No, no, that's fine, I'd be more than happy to do that. This is to wrap up our housekeeping task of updating the code books to give the code officers the most updated information to work with. We did have our first reading on December 8th. And the second reading, I'll just explain that we are updating the code books for the 2008, 2009, and 2012 codes. This language will be updated in the code book to be adopted within section 68-2, 82-2, 88-2, 110, I think 2 is what you said, 127-2, and 131. This also recognizes the City of Sunbury's use of Act 45. I will note that this ordinance will take effect in 10 days after the final passage tonight, and that would be January 22nd. So, right after the New Year, the code office would have access to using these updated books. And I will also note that the, a copy of the ordinance was placed on file with the Northumberland County Law Library, the Daily Island, and the City Cars Office as required. I believe we're just ready for passage, or final passage of this ordinance.
Questions? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Well, John, second reading of the 2015 budget.
Okay. I'd like to make a couple of comments before we start this discussion tonight. This is probably, this is my seventh or eighth budget, and it's probably been the most difficult one that I've ever had to put together. Anything that we do tonight is going to affect the lives of the people of the City of Sunbury and the city of Cleveland. So, these, these are not things that are taken lightly. We discussed last week and looked at three different options. I have worked right through this week with Harry Spake, our, our city clerk, and Kevin Trup, our city treasurer. We'll offer a, a fourth compromise tonight, which I think, I'm hoping, will be a little easier for all of us to, to take. First of all, I want to make clear the difference between a termination and a layoff. A termination is a permanent termination of an employee. A layoff is where we have expectation that the individuals will be called back within 18 months or less. Right? So, with that in mind, we have been able to identify $49,000 worth of additional cuts. Now, these cuts came from other departments. Each of the other departments took a cut of about $5,000 to part-time people. We will need to police the budgets for part-time more, more carefully, including those at the snack bar and so forth. We have, I, we have moved a fence that was in this budget, moved that out of this budget and moved that to a capital budget. We will borrow that $10,000 that, that we need to do that. We have, so we have cut part-time in three departments. We will eliminate one part-time position from the treasurer's office. With that said, we are able to, we were able to save, and we had a copy, we had a, a computer lease that ran out at the end of December, which we had originally thought was for another year. So, a, after another week of diligent work, we, we had identified about $49,000. I'd like to offer a compromise to all of those options for council consideration tonight. I would like to, to propose a budget that lays off one police officer, lays off or terminates one part-time person in the treasurer's office, and does further cuts to part-time in each department. That would mean one layoff, with the hope that that person could be called back within 18 months. That will give us enough money in this budget to carry the second officer probably through the end of May. That will give us five months, four or five months, that we can look at all the options to try to raise additional, raise additional income, or to cut additional expenses. Hopefully to save that officer's job, and hopefully to call one officer, Miss Burlough, back within that 18-month timeframe. I feel pretty confident that we could do both of those. I know we run the risk when we lay someone off that they may go somewhere else. And, we hate to lose good officers, we, we appreciate everyone who works in our department. We've got good guys working there, and gals, and they, they do a good job for you and for me every day. So, I would like to offer this as a solution. Two, two-mill raise, one layoff in the police department, which will hopefully be a layoff that will be recalled, and one termination in the treasurer's office, and further cutting part-time in the other three departments. And I offer that as a compromise to the other three, which we've talked about last night. I'd like to just add something to that. One of the goals is, and Brad and I, Chief and I are getting together next week to go over some things, and our goal is to, we're gonna come up with a different report that you guys will have all the council meetings to see exactly what everybody's doing. And we'll, we'll, we're gonna get down to some points where we think we can improve some, generate some income coming in. And our goal would be to come back to this council in four or five months at the most and be able to say, well, here's why we think we should be able to keep this person. I'm, I'm not saying anything personal about anybody, but the two officers that are out the bottom are clearly two of my better off, are better officers, I should say. And there are be, there will be some guys I, I truly believe will be retiring here in the future, so it might be a matter of replacing, you know, keeping some better guys on. I, I really don't see any way we could save all of them, but this would at least allow us to work towards that goal. I asked John if he, if there's anything we can do as a compromise versus losing both of them. So, you know, this is, to me, is, is better than our other alternative. So, what we'll do tonight, I mean, everybody gets to talk, if you want to talk, we'll vote on this. If it doesn't pass, then somebody will bring up another motion to, we, we need to pass a budget tonight. So, does anybody else want to make a comment on this proposal?
I have a question. Does one of the officers, or both the officers get laid off? Sick time, vacation, etc.? If we have the money in the budget, where does that come from?
All the money would be in the budget. You know what we owe them if they get laid off?
It'll come from somewhere.
Right, it'll be in the budget.
And then, their healthcare?
Whatever they're due, when they retire, if, whoever gets, would get laid off, we would sit down and say, here's what we owe you, and then, what can we do for the healthcare? Yeah, we're not gonna say they own up healthcare next Monday or January the 1st. We would give them a month or two of healthcare, I guess. And that would be paid for out of that line. There has to be a line heading in there to settle with, with the guy or guys that we would lose. So, is that a form of a motion, John?
I'll make that form of a motion. I'll second that.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
I'm going to abstain rather than vote, because I'm gonna tell you why I'm going to do it.
Well, you have to recen, you have to tell us, because no candidate's abstaining.
Uh, I believe that the offer that's gonna go is probably more vested in the city than any other officer in the police force. I am totally against, just because we worked five months for the, uh, in the beginning of this year, with a previous chief that by his own admission, did not make calls, did not make arrests. Tell me that person. We had another officer off, came back to white duty in August. Didn't come back full duty till November, so we're down two police officers, right then and there. We had two officers that were working, for the most part, at the first half of the year later, on strictly the murder, by their admission. So, that's four officers we're down. We had other officers off with surgeries, or sicknesses, or whatever. We have the records to prove it, and we still survived with overtime with what we did. Down four or five officers, mostly the whole year. And I'm totally against doing it, because I think, again, I think that kid is probably more vested in this city with what he does than any other officer in the police force. So, I'm abstaining.
Hold on, we, uh, we're gonna have to take a five-minute executive session. I really don't think you can.
Well, then, if you want me to, I'll vote now.
Well, I'm just saying, I think you have to vote, and I don't think you can abstain. You don't have a personal conscience.
There's a question-
Alright, well, that's why I asked for you to vote, we didn't ask for you to know.
There's a question back.
Excuse me, my name's Carol Mazzio, and you all know who I am. Counsel me, Reichner. My husband explained to you in great detail that the reason he did not answer calls is when people filed complaints, there had to be someone neutral to listen to their complaints to decide whether or not their complaints were valid. My husband put in anywhere from 60 to 80 hours overtime, unpaid, every month. And you should be ashamed of yourself.
My husband told me that he did a lot of answering-
And why, and why, my husband was really, did answer calls, and you should be ashamed of yourself.
Alright, thank you. We're voting, we're not explaining anything, we're just trying to get a vote.
Reichner?
We vote what?
Henry?
No.
Ister?
Yes.
It's passed.
Okay. That passed on the first reading. Second reading, tax levy ordinance, Jim or John?
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm not done with this.
Second reading.
If, if a court is getting laid off, when will it take, especially? He, that poor boy right there-
We will talk to him tomorrow. Well, that's what I'm saying, we have to sit down with him and go right here and go, we owe you.
Okay, this probably will pass next month, okay?
It passed tonight.
It's okay, there's three votes, but, that kid right there needs to know what's gonna go wrong. Not tomorrow, not the next-
They both do.
You guys should have had that figured out, or we should have had, we should have-
I don't have it figured out. I haven't sit, I know where he's come to. We will sit down with him, what was I supposed to tell him? I didn't know if we could save him or not. We will sit down in the next day or two and get straightened out, Dale. I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, I'm not, I didn't say you were. I'm just saying, it shouldn't have taken this long, he should have known what was going on.
Wait a second, Dale.
We didn't vote for it tonight.
Jim, you guys have been talking about it for how long? We've been talking for how long? The kid knew it was here.
We just talked tonight, John, we just talked tonight. We knew that, we knew that.
You guys have been laid off amongst yourselves, Dave. Nobody talked about it, we didn't have no meeting, but we all knew it was coming.
Well, sure, that's why we're sitting here talking about, what, we're gonna get $250,000? We've been talking about it. Okay. Second reading of the tax ordinance, John.
We passed on first reading a tax ordinance, which will increase the village on a general purpose from 23 mils to 25 mils. And this would be, you'll have three options in your, in your package. This would be the first option. And, this is the second reading on this, passed this ordinance to increase tax from 23 to 25 mils. Now, keep in mind that that's just the general revenue. We also have a recreation tax, we have a reduction tax, and library tax. So, 25 mils is not the total burden. Total burden is 29 and a quarter mils. I make a motion that we approve this on second reading to increase the general revenue tax from 23 to 25 mils.
Do you have a second?
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
$10,000 Riverfront at Chessus Street, John, Kevin?
We have, Kevin and I have been working, the Riverfront project is closing out. However, we have a new Chessus Street project, which will be starting up in the spring. We have a, a little bit of money actually left from the Riverfront project. We would like to transfer that money to the Chessus Street project, which will be a construction project also, that will start this coming spring. I make a motion that we authorize Treasurer Trup, Kevin Trup, to transfer that money from the Riverfront project to the Chessus Street project, to get that project stick going.
I left $136 up in that, that Riverfront was a little bit older here. Basically, that was paid off and not for. So, we have $136 left in that account, until we see where it goes in the next round.
I think that, I think that Jim, and council, and Kevin are to be commended in the Riverfront project, and right on budget. Again, that doesn't happen too often in federal projects these days, so I think the city did a good job on managing. I have a motion on the court.
Do you have a second?
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
We vote rental license, Reichner?
Hey, we're gonna table that. I'm just gonna bring up, we have our first, with the drug arrest, we have, we have our first land warrant in violation of the, but I think it would be better to get everything, everybody, bring it up, or catch me about the suspension.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 'cause there's another part I'm gonna add to that too, so, yeah, we'll do that.
Hi, welcome, occupancy permit, Sunoco, Rick?
Mike? It's basically just a formality of this, oh, we need to pass this so we can get the thing to, back to Sunoco and get, get the state.
As Mr. Reichner was saying, to keep this project moving, Sunoco has, is requesting City of Sunbury to submit an application for the highly occupancy permit at the site on 4th Street. With that, Sunoco is asking City of Sunbury to have it, because City of Sunbury is a land. Sunoco would be the agent. So, basically, we're asking for approval here tonight, for City to move forward with this project, so the mayor can sign a part of the contract that needs to be signed, and we need to send it back then to Sunoco, so they can submit. And by doing this, it relieves all of the responsibilities of City to Sunoco at the site.
So, I have a motion, do you have a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Open bids award sale, 1984 Conaline Camper Special.
Okay, let's just, the whole police, I get, or whatever, we have a bid. City of Sunbury will receive sealed bids for blah, blah, blah. We have a bid from Matt Johnson, $300. And I think that's the only one on that vehicle.
What's that worth? $300?
I would put a stipulation on that, that I'd ask them to make sure that's stripped of all the police markings on the car. Somebody has to take all that stuff, police stuff, the sneakers. I mean, I don't care, no, I'm just a detail.
I'll tell a guy, kind of, yeah.
Besides, we don't need somebody selling cars.
Yeah, you can get them off, you can get them back for a standard. I don't think- We'll get more from scrap. I think it's, the body's aluminum, it's not metal. I'd give $600 for a car.
If you're talking about a couple dollars, I would just give her a minute.
Alright, Chicago Motors. 2003 Ford.
Wait a minute, are we gonna accept that?
I don't know, just do it.
Yeah, we vote, oh, do it together, go ahead, go ahead.
2003, 75,000 miles, there, it's $407. From Chicago Motors.
$407?
Bid on 2003 Crown Victoria, many repaired, but Georgia Cole, is that the lady? $500 is her bid?
What's that named, Cole?
I think it's-
She's the one that bought the last one.
Georgia Cole. Lloyd Coon's bid, $100 on that. Joe Vesavage, Wicker, Pennsylvania, bid $800 on the 2003 Crown bid. So, the high bid on the Crown Victoria was Joseph Vesavage, at $800. The only bid on the Camper Special van was $300 to Matt Johnson.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept both bids.
I'd like to make a stipulation, more of those towards future cruisers for the police department.
Do you have a second?
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Approval to pay invoices, John?
We currently owe $73,085.89 of general fund expenses and $280,000.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Mazzio. I have a question. At the, one previous meeting, Councilman Ister said he was $175,000 short on the Chester Street project. Has funding been found for that? And if not, how can we pass this project?
Actually, it was 139, but I might be wrong here. But the bid's given low than expected, and we have power funding to do the project.
So, we're fully funded?
Pardon?
It's fully funded now?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Regina?
Oh, thank you. Regina Russell, community activist. I would like to suggest that in laying off the police officers, that you consider at least giving them health insurance for six months to a year paid by the city. Second, two years ago, and Councilman Rechner, you weren't at these meetings at that time, former Chief Mazzio, I recall, was requesting additional officers on the police department, and his request was declined at that time. A chief's responsibility is to delegate and supervise and report to the council and the public the crimes that happen in the city. A lot of times, the chief is here, and it's not just you. There's never a report given, and most cities, when you go to a council meeting and the chief is there, and usually the chief is not there, he'll have another officer, they will give a report to the public so that we know the crimes that are going on in the city. Everyone doesn't read the newspaper, everyone doesn't listen to the TV or the radio, so you have to try to reach the public and inform them in any way that you possibly can. But I would like to say that I used to notice with Chief Mazzio that it seemed like he was at every meeting that was called for, by you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if there were any type of meeting, for some reason, the chief was always at those meetings. I don't know if Chief Hare has been doing that because his responsibilities have increased, but certainly, they don't need to be attending every meeting. And if there is a shortage, we don't need to have two or three officers sitting at a city council meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's go on to a happier note. New Year's Eve.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, we didn't have SRI in here, but go right ahead.
We're good. New Year's Eve. Julie and Ister is in charge of the children's program down at Park this year, it's a frozen theme. We have stuff going on like you wouldn't believe. I hope everybody brings their kids and grandkids out, it's going to be a really good time.
What time does that start?
Starts at six o'clock, the kids program starts from six to eight. Our music starts at 8:30, we have four tribute bands playing, and this year, the light bulb, we've been working on that diligently. Triangle Tech, I think they have it set up where it's actually going to go 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, and when you get to the top, it's going to have a, we've got a ticker tape machine kind of like what they have in New York. And Triangle Tech, put it on there with a piece of plexi-lax over it, so if it rains or snows, it doesn't get wet. And it's going to actually light up and say something. I'm not going to tell.